Not to say we acquire some more property to expand and add at one of, or to build a sewer station at, you know, say at the northern part of the city to where the majority of the growth is going.
Sure. Well, the USDA requires that we look at options, and that may be one of them. We'll look at where the city's grow is occurring and we'll, we'll look at, does it make sense to maybe do the next plant expansion like Zell's and relocate it somewhere else? I don't know, at this point in time with all the investment they'll have at that location on Gullie Road, it will probably not be feasible to try to create another plant at their locations, say on Puerto Rico or some other location, because then you're just gonna be adding to your maintenance costs and your, your operational costs will have two times the network. So there's a lot of issues to consider there, but we will be looking at that option. That's because this, the PBR process through USDA requires that we look at other options like that. Is this the best place that we can spend the money on your extension plan? And we will look at that and work with the city staff, and I'll assume from then some of our findings back to y'all at some point during the next couple of months.
When you say when it reaches a 70%, that's three months in a row.
That's correct. That's correct. And you'll see, we have some infiltration issues here, and if we went into a real wet period, you might see that happen much more quickly because of infiltration.
Would we get fined for that from TCQ or do we...
Well, no. All you have is a letter to TCQ saying you need to start your planning and design for the next expansion. And then by the time you have, you reach 90%, you've gotta have your plant destruction underway. So there's thresholds that TCQ will force you to act based on, I mean, a 70% or 90%. But if there's not a fine involved, just start your work, start your planning and design work, get that done. I guess the next step, I'm gonna have William Paulson come up for the next, and he's been working with Andrew for the last several months on this topic, so.
That's the, that's the waste water project.
Yeah. I'll get you a moment. We'll get you a word in office, please.
Mr. Hyatt, the convention, the equipment's breaking down and all that. When they do the new ones, is that gonna replace that?
Yes. And all, and basically, because we have to increase capacity, it'll require larger pumps, larger pipes, and so all the, the older equipment that's breaking down now.
The older things?
Yes. Now, the stuff that was installed about two years ago, that will remain in most cases. In almost all cases, it'll remain because of size for the next level.
Like the electrical panels and stuff?
Well, the, a lot of the electric panels might be updated because there was some work done when the additional lift action improvements were done, and we had to, and there'll probably be a, a more electrical work done with the supply chain.
Yeah, part of our values should be on the electric system. Make sure they're coming after what you need with new pump systems, and then also evaluate what's there and if there's any light hot in every place or water, everything like that. When we're done, 2017 or that area, you got a plant that's fully functional and you're working, sorry, you're part of a lot.
There, I'll turn over to William. William Paulson's been with us for quite a few years. He's got extensive experience in wastewater plants and water treatment plants and the citizen's dwelling area and areas south of here, so he's worked on some very significant projects and also small projects. So I'll turn it over to William.
All right. Double triple. Our mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to, my presentation's on the, basically where we are in the wastewater system model, so I'll go through it. There's some areas we didn't kind of engineer and make over quick, so I need to slow down and go back to finding them. So, so, all right, so it's kind of the summary of the work. What we're doing, we need, this is really pretty basic. First, we compile the data. We do a GIS mapping, which is a geological information system. It's a program that maps through city and it's got streets happening on it, and you click on it and get information on that, whatever the entity is, and then the wastewater system model. So the first thing we've done, we use a lot of field notes and information provided by the city, which I really wanna thank Andrew for all his hard work, because he's providing us information, pumping manholes, making them down, giving inverts and flow lines and all that. And that's, I think he's doing it during lunch, because he's got a full-time job, and he's still providing us information, so I just want to thank him for that. But we're using some record drawings, we have construction documents, we have the parcel information on your properties from the appraisal district that we downloaded, and then we're using, we're using the SAWs, equivalent dwelling unit calculations to determine our flows, which I'll explain a little, in a little part of the download. And then we have a lot of information we download off the internet, and our aerial photography and contras and stuff like that that you can get off the internet. We use that. So we're, right now, we're compiling the data. We have, we compile a lot of data, but we're verifying what we can compile. And then we take that data and we put it in our GIS mapping, where you, you'll see an index sheet, which I'll show in a minute. We create the wastewater lines, the manhole, to put them on locations. And then we add the data on that, that line or that manhole, the specific data associated with that. So when you click on it, you can pull it out and see it. And then, once that GIS mapping's done and it's, and we're comfortable that it's accurate, then we create our model, which is where we use in Excel, which makes it real easy to, for your staff to work after the run. So what we've done right now is we've got a grid of the city. This is a, just to get it on there, the scale's not small, but you can see there's an index sheet of all of this stuff. And there's a drawing that you had from, I'm not sure when, but 19, they're pretty old because they're, but still, you just ain't gonna hold pleasure for that. We just expanded the sheets around. And then next, I have some examples of some of the sheets we've done. You can see, this is sheet seven down by the brick party implant. It's a little hard to read. You see all the boxes? That's the, that's boxes with the information for the manhole and pipe. So that's sheet seven, and this would be the one next to it. So you can see, we have parcel information, property information, and the manholes and the lines and everything. So now, when we're creating the sewer mains, we kinda have the main trunk lines that everything feeds into. So that would be like, this one we're calling the trunk line A. And then off of that, we're gonna go down to where these, where the road line grew up and down. It's kind of a branch off that, so then we're calling that, the branches would be A dash A and A dash B and so forth. And then when you get to the, like the third level, or we call it branch two, you can see where it starts spidering out, spidering out. And it's, that would be like A dash A dash A, A dash B, A dash B, A dash C. And so it's a, it's an easy way to follow it and see where you need to go. So you can see where the lines are. So once we have the data in there and we're comfortable with all the information under GIS, we can export the information out into Excel, is what we need. So now we're doing our, or utilizing the GIS system. And on that, we have the manhole, we have basically the rim elevation on top, the flow, basically the flow line elevation down, and the pipe, and the pipe's coming in and out of the manhole. On the pipes, we have information such as the line size, the top material, the pipe, which makes a difference, and, and the length, which obviously is the length impacts the calculation. So, and then parcel data that we got, there's the dwellings and the type of dwellings that are associated with that. And then, so once we have all that data inputted in GIS, then we can export it out into the Excel spreadsheet that will help us create the basis of our wastewater model. And then from that, we have to create the, so. I mentioned the SAWs, EDU, or equivalent dwelling units. What they've done, if you're not familiar with that, it's, they've basically generalized what, based on what the type of property it is, or what's on the property. Is it residential, is it multifamily, is it a church, is it a park, is it a medical building, and so forth. And based on that criteria, there's some things based on if it's a restaurant, it's based on seating, if it's residential, it's based on where it is, or where, elementary schools are based on other students. And basically, they assign a flow for whatever that one unit is. If it's students, if it's an elementary school and it's students, then it's, they say it's like point oh, oh, seven gallons per day per student. And then based on that, we can estimate what that elementary's gonna produce on wastewater flows for the day. This is actually information we extrapolated out from your city. The, the building addresses and classifications are correct, but the rest of the stuff is everybody in there, obviously. But this is just getting ideas. We extrapolate that out, and then we put in our units and the total gallons per minute per unit, and it calculates the cumulative flow at very end. Once we input that information, it'll tell us what that apartment complex or that big place provides into the system. So the next one. This is actually our model, which is kinda hard to see, the Excel spreadsheet, but you have the lines. Essentially, it just calculates the slopes and the flows and everything else based on the information we have. And really what you wanna see is, the last column says the main capacity. It's really, that's your critical line right there. That tells you how much of that capacity is left in that line, in that segment of line. So if it's, if what we're gonna do is we're gonna have, if you say, we'll set some criteria with your staff and stuff, but if it's over 50%, it's gonna fill that box and turn yellow. If it's over 75%, it'll turn red, saying, hey, there's a potential problem there. You can start looking at it and maybe do something. Now, the nice, the, the, what's really, using Excel makes it actually easy to, when you have new development come in, you can determine where that development's gonna come into the manhole. And you can either input all the lines in that development, or you can just basically add flow to that manhole. And then you basically create a line, put it in there, and it'll recalculate everything based on that, that new flow. So it's fairly simple, once you have the, understanding what's coming in, what the development is, on how it impacts your system. And at that point, you can say, okay, this line is 21 inches, fine, but as soon as I have this, these two developments, it gets over capacity, and then you can, you can start planning your impacts with it. So today, the information, the work we have remaining is our survey crew we're having today, kind of verifying some rim elevations for us to make sure our aerial information's correct. We're getting some lift station information from the city, which, talking with Andrew, will have probably tomorrow or Monday. And then we need to have a specific data for the parcels on those, to calculate the flows. That'll take a little time, but that's not, like, too late or intensive. We're gonna assign the manholes each parcel with the flows, and then, and then once we get the, everything put in the model, then we need to calibrate it based on the flow. We know what flow's coming in the plant, and we need to calibrate the model to get that flow to kinda match what's at the plant. Because we don't, if we're coming in at 600 thousand gallons a day, and our model says it's 300, okay, our models, we need to adjust it, so we need to calibrate it. And then, and then we'll, at that point, we can identify any existing capacity impacts that we have. And then also, you're at, at that point where we can, you can add lines to determine any future impacts, future impacts. So with that, if there's any comments or questions outside of when we're gonna be done? I can just go straight to that one. What I'm, what I'm thinking is the information we got, we need to verify, right at the point now where we have a lot of information, we just need to verify and make sure what we have is correct. So I need a couple of weeks to get the survey stuff done and make sure what we have is correct. And then probably, so I figured, two, couple of weeks to do that, and then I'm thinking three, we're gonna use three weeks to build the model and come up with something where we can start taking some results, and then two weeks to generate the report. So we're looking at the final report or a draft report we need for, beginning, you know, right at the end of April. So we're talking like first week in June, June, middle of June. But we'll have a model that we can start using, I would say, by the end of May. Now, will this model be able to tell us if, if we need to size those, obviously, you know, we're gonna be estimating this on the screen, you know, to redo this sewer lines before, you know, basically, we're gonna tear it up? Correct. It'll, it'll tell you, the model can tell, it'll tell you, hey, this line's undersized, it's a six, or it's an eight, and needs to be, then you can go in, you can take that, you can, because we have line size on there, and you can just go in and change it eight to ten, or pick a ten at work. So it'll, it'll tell you where your problem's on. Or, hey, we can't, we can't put that subdivision in at that location. We need to move it here, or we need to, you need a lift station or pump at somewhere else to do it off that line. So it'll, it'll identify where the problem, potential problem is.
And if he had lines, does he...
Yes, ma'am.
Will we be able ourselves to put it into the system?
Yes, ma'am.
Or we have to go?
No, you can, it will, it will explain to Andrew and how it, how it works, and what, how to do it. And, but he can, he can add it in how he wants. And we'll keep the base file at Mury, so that way when he does something, it means to go back to the original iteration.
Andrew, can second eliminate, who has this map?
Uh, you can roll.
Thank you.
And it'll be kept electronically, so. And there's, and there's some areas in the map that we don't have good information, and so there's some areas that, let's just say downtown area, but we're not really concerned with that because it's developed right now. So we can add flows to, to come at a certain point. But as staff goes in, when they repair lines or they do work, they can take, they know, they know what they need to do, and they can verify the information, and then basically, it'll take, the model will be accurate, but we get more detailed information as, as it progresses.
Is that rolling back?
I'm sure I...
Have I seen the map?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes.
Other code.
So, well, ours will be colored, but it'll be like a fiesta.
All right.
Is there any questions?
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Yes. Yes, Senator, are we still looking at the, at the water line as well, or are we specific right now with wastewater? Because I know a while back, we, we, I think we've given direction to be able to locate the sewer and the water, some of the things.
Well, we are definitely, while Andrew's doing his field study, he is looking at indicating some issues in reference to the water. So this is kinda like working two paths at the same time. But our focus in reference to the engineers have been on the wastewater itself. We have this, we're looking into some grants that maybe they're able to help us with our water issue and expanding those. But as Andrew is out there crawling around, literally, I do mean crawling around, he has indicated the water as well. He and Andrew are both working on putting it together. So we have water and sewer working together. And hopefully we can definitely digitize this and what we can help and go forward. The nice thing about it is, once it is computerized, that as developers come in, they can actually, the two programs can talk to each other, and they talk engineering, I don't speak that language, but they will be able to, be able to download their proposed, or what they do, quite quickly, once we have this. So this is definitely gonna give us the framework and the foundation that we need.
So we can actually like, add a layer of the, of the, the water over the sewer?
The map, the map that I showed, like sheet seven and eight?
Right.
That's just the wastewater. And then what we'll, what we'll do is we'll just have it, we're gonna add water to that, so it's one program. And basically, you load that information in, what you wanna see, and you click the buttons over here, it turns it on and off, kinda like Google Maps and stuff. And so all that information will be on there, on the same program, so if that's what you want. You want everything in one place. Now, it'll be two separate programs to do the water and wastewater, to do the modeling. We won't use Excel for the water, because it's pressure piping, so you know what's sophisticated. So, but we use WaterCath or some programs similar to that. And it'll be a different program to do the modeling, but the base information will be the same. And the nice thing is, with the system, with this system, you don't need any specific computer. You can do it with a, with a quality desktop. You can run all this information. It's just, a lot of the aerial and stuff have a lot of data, so you probably need extra hard drives, so it'll be easier there, but other than that, it's true.
Okay, now we're going to do two G, Phil's summer youth program.
Yes, Mayor of City Council, if you look under task two G, there's a letter about Dave Monster, from Flops, and that's, and that's, in reference to this program. And what I can be honest told me is that they give us a grant. I believe last year was somewhere around five thousand dollars. I just see we would bestow this grant along with in-kind matching activities and funds that the city can have. Sometimes it's funds, sometimes it's return, and in-kind ones to use of our community center. And I believe last year, the lion's share of all was given to the Boys and Girls Club. So what I'm asking for is direction in reference to what you need to do, because I need to respond to this letter. They said that the city was, be participating in the supervised youth program, providing several different activities during the summer, they have youth programs of various ages. And they have a suggestion of activities in Iowa, too. Everything from Little League to library program, basketball, tennis, soccer, and things such as that. So I'm looking for direction, ask them how you would like to use those funds, but also direction that you'd like to participate, because I need to serve them with a letter saying that we would like to participate in this summer program, send a request, and actually send out a request for organizations within our community that would like to receive these funds if we so did them. And I believe we probably will give them. So I just need to have direction on how we want to go this year.
What do we do, what do we do last year?
Last year, we received five thousand dollars, and I believe you gave all of that to Boys and Girls Club, as well as that in-kind with community center use of the facilities and things such as that. The ballroom, the activity, the gym, for that. That's what we did last year.
Phelps is gonna do 29, so it's a $3,078, $2 per unit? Yeah, what they're doing, so almost six gallons?
Yeah, it'll be somewhere around between five and six. They haven't given us exactly how much, but I believe it'll be at least five, maybe more.
And then we have the max of five or six?
And then we have the max of five or six. And it can be used for one organization, several organizations. I don't have a history, so I'm looking for the directions of what we would like to do. I know that there was a summer program, the movies, I believe it provided some movie. And everybody keeps telling about the summer, so I can imagine that summer movies would be something that the children would like to do and to see. Some of the summer camps did that, the Little Leagues and different things. We're just looking for good direction on how we want to use this funding. And you're correct, Council, the amount will probably increase from the five. I don't have the exact amount, but I'm quite sure it'll be at least five, maybe six.
These organizations, were they, did they approach Phelps, or is that just something that they...
Actually, Phelps leaves that to the communities itself. And so if they approach Phelps, Phelps will send them to us. And so it's for you all to decide how do you want to dispense this money. First, I just think you can tell me, yes, you want to say, you want to participate, so I can prepare a letter to do that. And then two, how would you like to either contract and have people to apply for the money, to either, I know the library has sent some information on this, do that. I know Boys and Girls Club has definitely said that they would like to be interested in participating in that program, along with the young lady who runs the movie theater would like to provide a movie for them at a, a number fee for the summer. That could be a summer program the city provides. And so I'm just looking for direction of how to move forward.
Where does the, the funds come from?
The funds come from Phelps, so it's a Phelps...
Specifically from Phelps? But the city has to match the...
The city has generally matched in-kind type of activity, for example...
So I think it'd be, you know, if we're matching a five thousand, it's $10?
Yes.
Okay.
And the use of the community centers are very good matches. I believe Roy's, Roy's and I, the library is looking at doing a fundraiser, and they need books. And so if we use it, for example, we could give them so many X dollars, as well as the use of the banquet hall in the community, where we have that available, we can offer them that. And that's that in-kind that we can do for them.
At least, if we definitely want to participate in, as far as delegating, if you'd like to, you know, pick the rate on that, I mean, I don't know if you're asking us to give X amount to certain organizations or...
Well, what I, if I could give a recommendation, Mayor of City Council, I would recommend that we definitely participate in this program with Phelps, one. And then, two, I would recommend that we try to have a diverse approach in reference to using the funding, to do several different things. I know the library has contacted me and submitted a letter, so that we can send out something on our internet, on the website, to post it, and to let them know that they could come do an application for that. I'm sort of, I'm interested in what they want to use the money for and how they're gonna use the funding. It definitely something that we want to do. And I can come back to you if you like, with anyone who has come forward and stepped forward, if they do what you're just thinking. I strongly also recommend that the movie program for the summer be something that we use. I know we have several summer camps around, that that be something that we provide, which is a fun activity. For you, I would give it a good look.
I think we'd also have to base it on, on the usage, like, certain, well, just for example, basketball, at a, at a certain time that they play basketball, we have to take into consideration who, who doesn't gear around, or who doesn't just...
Well, actually, in this letter itself, it's just for summer, it's just for summer.
Only for summer. I think it's, it has to be summer, just, I, programs that are for the summer.
Yeah, it's, it's, the facility says for the summer program, is what it says for youth programs. So we want to provide that for the summer.
We have to set a, a date of summer, or month, when you say summer.
Summer typically means when schools out, and we have teachers here, and I bet you they have it on there, fall, schools out in June. So it should be from June to the end of August. So that's typically what they talk about for summer programs, the teachers. And I know your wife works in the school program, she probably has it marked up when those days start. So it's sometime early June to very late August.
He probably has it on his phone.
Tony, you have something?
Yes. And I wanted to add that the map doesn't necessarily have to be managed. It could be, in a form of, with the youth facilities, for example, that field for baseball or the, the major segments. So it doesn't have to necessarily be managed.
$10.
Right. And you're gonna need to generate, like, an application, just a simple little application. You know, the name of the, the order it is, the name of where, what they want funds for, what the amount that they're requesting. Hopefully, they know it's not the full amount. And then you filter it and see which, you know, like, you talked about the library. Yeah, the library, you know, they have their label. And we can, I can generate something like that, and send you a sample or a draft, and we can let you know what the results, and we can put it on the agenda to come back when we have a result. It probably won't be our next meeting, but we can come back and let them do it. Even if you care to, we can have them to come and present to you, or representatives to come, if you have any questions of the activity, you can do that as well.
I think what we can do is, if, if we can provide something that's non-monetary, such as the Little League to provide the fields and, and say the basketball clinic to provide the, the, the courts, and, you know, to, to offer those non-monetary, and the ones that we can't offer, anything of that nature, too, to offer something monetary. But I guess this will be on a, on a first come, first saved, sort of, basis?
Yes, because like you said, it'll be somewhere between 10,000 and 12,000 dollars. It'll be first come, first served type of activity. But I have to agree with you, we probably need to spread the wealth, so Steve can try to share. Definitely know that the library was interested, and I know Boys and Girls Club is interested. And basketball clinics, as I showed earlier a couple meetings ago, the local Spurs team would like to use the gym and some things. So you can sponsor, you know, any activities, and the money can be used actively to get to them, or to buy water, or sponsor, you know, award ceremony would be something that they would, they want to use the money for. Those trophies are important. Pizza, pizza and hot dogs have gone a long way, so a thousand dollars towards that. And the use of the gym on four, five different occasions would truly be a nice grant that you all can provide.
Even the pool?
Even the pool could be provided. That's gonna be a little tricky because of the schedule, and that is a very popular, as I'm learning from this Lusa, popular application in reference to do that. Mondays are closed, things are just that. Monies and gold, things like that. And look for the campus, because we're going to be having a pool opening very soon. And we would like to have the public officials to come forward and cut the ribbon, so to speak, on our new pool. And that's some paint over there, and we're going to be painting some things. So we're hoping that we can have that, but the pool, you're right, Mayor, a pool is definitely something that we can do.
It's the entrance, it's like she can do three days.
Yes.
She can do specific...
If you're a free day, you want theme and ice cream.
And whatever she gets.
Yes, I mean, I would think something for that day would be lovely to have that in it, actually buy out the ice cream or still column, and have those kind of activities we can do. Fun, hot sun, it's going to be a fun activity, and so the more we can get, the more fun, but we can get, I think that's something we can definitely use. Put it in the newspaper that we're going to be doing that this summer website. I would, even more than that, because it's in the first release, and I'm just seeking applications. But I do want to say we want it to be organized through, so it's not necessarily somebody doing in their backyard. Something that has to be like Boys and Girls Club, that has to be an organization, so it goes, but if finally, you know...
And actually put a deadline on the applications, that way, you know, we can allocate the funds properly with first come, first served.
Yes, I'll have to get a calendar for the deadline date, but we need to do this quite quickly. We're going to get this to Phelps, probably by Monday morning.
It says the reply must be received by a court waiting team, does that...
I told her Marcy, and she said, as long as, I told her it was on our agenda tonight, and she said, as long as we got her something tomorrow, you know, even if it's just an email stating that we are willing to participate, because that's all this is right now, is just a yes or no, if we're going to participate in the program.
Now we have Boys and Girls Club, the book.
I'm glad that, I'm going to go before. In here, I've got some information on what we're doing on our summer program, because that's why I'm here. And I'm here asking you if you would consider us for some of this money, and I'm hoping that you're going to agree to participate on. Um, last year, we did take the, the reason why we got the, the funding from Phelps last year was because we were the only ones that came up here and applied for it. And I think the mayor's exactly right, it does need to be put out to the community, so other people can apply for it. The way we did it last year was, we went ahead and did an in-kind. So like, for instance, when the Phelps sent the check over to the city, the city went ahead and wrote the check over to Boys and Girls Club. Those monies went to pay for our summer day camp program. Our summer day camp program runs from soon as the kids get out of school to about two weeks before school starts. This year, it's going to be estimated going for ten weeks. We do provide over the summer serenity for the kids. We provide basketball, summer basketball. We also provide mini-camps every morning, and educational camps, like, for instance, we'll do tennis, flag, football, I think, let me see, what are some others, soccer. And then also, we added sewing, cooking and nutrition. We did fun with math, we did robotics. So we did a lot of things educational, our summer day camp last year, you'll see on the posters that you have in here, that's all the info, what we did last year. I have not done our posters for this year. This summer, we're going to be doing Asia, so we like to immerse the kids every week in a country in Asia. For instance, if we do China, one day out of the week, we do cooking, the kids get to eat Chinese food. Our arts and crafts are about China. By the way, did you guys know that it was China that did the first kite? So guess what we're going to be doing in arts and crafts? The kids are going to be making kites. Let's see, we do our sports, or something that China does, or sports, which, you know, I have to, I have to do a lot of research, I go into a lot of work to put this program up, so the kids can do this. I would say about fifty to sixty percent of our kids coming into the summer day camp program are scholarship, all they have to do is pay their ten dollar membership fee, that's charged once a year. That money goes to our liability insurance, which of course, the city does have on file, their addendum on that. That, those kids come into the program and they can be in there for the whole ten weeks. It helps a lot of parents out. We have a lot of parents that work at jobs, but they can't afford to work, and put their kids into daycare, so what they do is they bring them over to Boys and Girls Club. We are limited on the amount of kids that we can bring into our program because of space availability. But last year, we did go ahead, and we have the in-kind monies that we used at the pool. The kids go to the pool once a week. We have movie day once a week for the kids, of course, it's on the theme of whatever we're doing that week. And also in there, I wanted you to know that, I think, a lot of people think that Boys and Girls Club is just a sports organization. We are not, because we have so many sports, and we've been doing sports here for a long time. But as that little paper that you have there, it says the five key elements for positive youth development. That is what Boys and Girls Club is about. We're here for positive youth development. Floris, as you know, right now, is in an epidemic, epidemic of drug-related issues with our teams. It's getting younger and younger. We have alcohol problems, tobacco problems. We are here hoping that we can build these kids' self-esteem, let them know that they are somebody, that they do have a future, and they can go someplace. For your interest, I know Ms. Henrietta brought up about the library. The library is teaming up with us this year, and we're happy to say that they're going to be coming in and doing that Lego class with our kids, so we give heat for them. And then also, this summer, we're adding something new, we're going to have numberistics, which that's going to be a class where the kids learn fun games about math. Because last summer, I had fun with algebra and geometry, and do you know, not one person signed up? Go figure that. So we're going to kind of force feed them in math this season. It will be fun games, so we're trying to cognitively keep them active over the summer, so when they start school, they're going to have all that still on their mind, they'll be able to transition into school in the fall, where it's going to be easy for them, or easier. And this really helps our kids that need help the most, and those are the kids who can afford it. I really appreciate you considering Boys and Girls Club for your funding. I haven't talked to the school yet, but last summer, they only came in and fed the kids in June. We did have to feed them for July and August. Those monies that you so graciously allowed us to have from Phelps went to feeding the kids, and also went to paying for some of our teachers that we had to come in, because I am getting qualified people in there to take care of some of our classes. We do have leadership programs, any of our teams. This, this program is five-year-olds, up to thirteen-year-olds. Any kids that are over thirteen, if they want to come into our program, it's like, come on. We put them as team leaders. So, we have white, blue, and red. White being our five and six, some of our seven-year-olds, blue being eight to ten. And our red group are our eleven to thirteen-year-olds. As you know, we have to divide them off because of different interests and different skills. But, those team leaders are there, they have about three or four kids that they walk around with. Those are their kids, those are the ones they take care of. And our class sizes, usually we try to keep them about twenty kids per class. But we don't have, our limit is like fifty kids. We can't do any more than fifty kids in the summer day camp program. Of course, basketball and swim team's different, but, you know, we can only have so many kids per teacher, or the class gets a little bit unmanageable. Are there any questions that anybody would like to ask? Okay.
You mentioned meals.
Mm-hmm.
Is the school not providing the meals out there?
Yes, they are, they have a grant, but I, because of last summer, and all the federal, you know, they had all those federal cuts and everything. If you remember, the school closed down for that month of July, I believe it was. And because of that, we didn't have that, because we're trying to save money. And so they didn't, we couldn't get the...
You're getting the meals in this summer, though?
I have no idea. I haven't been approved on it yet.
I remember Ms. Bayes, she said that they offer life...
Yes, okay, good. But we still have to do snacks.
Yeah. And then another question that I have, I know you get donations, and I'm looking at your father-in-law's report. What are the donations that you get from people listed? I see one at the top.
Yeah, you have one at the top, and this was from two thousand and thirteen, and I brought all this stuff over to my CPA. She went ahead and put it as best she could off of our records. All of our income is in the income, so like that, it was actually fifty-five hundred, I think, was the amount that Phelps gave last year. And that amount is put in the summer registration income.
Okay, and what do the students or the kids get when they pay registration?
What do they...
To participate, let's say, in your volleyball clinic, or your soccer teams, or...
A shirt. They get their uniforms.
That's every team?
Every team gets a uniform.
Is a traveling team considered one of your teams?
Yes, the traveling teams also get T-shirts, but those parents prefer, since they're going to San Antonio, they want to keep up with that San Antonio group. So, the parents are having to pay for it, we have a lot of parents complaining about that. So this year, we went ahead and found some sponsors. The sponsors went ahead and bought those uniforms this year, to help relieve the parents.
Okay, now, do the kids have to buy their own equipment, like their own ball?
Yes, in the past, we used to buy all the balls, we used to buy the bags, we used to buy all the equipment. It was getting very expensive, because our coaches would drive around with them in the trunk of their car. We'd, yeah, we'd never got our equipment back. So, we go, as we go, we learn, down there. And so now, we ask the kids, bring your own ball, and have your own shin guards. But we do have, like, for instance, we have a donation for volleyball knee pads. So any kids, they're there. If the kids come without shin guards, the kids don't need shoes, the kids need that, we have that stuff. We have it stockpiled in our shed for different-sized shoes, shin guards. So if any child is in need of it, we don't turn them down, nobody gets turned down. That's why we don't have forfeits. We don't forfeit a game. Those kids are there to have fun, they're not there to have a game forfeited. So, you know, but they do have to bring their ball. If they can't afford a ball, we have extras.
There's a few questions that I do.
How many years has this been going on, on the program?
Well, as most of you know, I have been a volunteer for Boys and Girls Club since the very beginning as a volunteer. And it was a long, I guess, a good, maybe six to seven years, that I had volunteered. I dropped out for two years, because I needed to finish my degree, I was getting too much, running a business, full-time volunteering, and then the school workload that I had. So I had dropped out two years, there was a, nobody was hired at that time, it was still all volunteer. But one of the criteria, our Southwest Director, we had to raise so much money. It was like fifty thousand dollars to be able to afford to step into the Boys and Girls Club, to follow their criteria. We raised our money. They told us that we had to hire somebody for one year. They called me back, I was just finished and just had gotten my degree. They called me back and asked if they could hire me for that position, which I was like, yeah, because I've been doing this forever, and I knew how to raise money, I knew how to put the programs together. So it was a no-brainer for me, and I, and I think they knew that is why they asked me back. But, so I have been working for Boys and Girls Club now for the last two and a half, this will be my third summer. The summer program, by the way, is one of, is, it's my design, so...
Is that on a sound, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm sounding. You'll see down there on the profit and loss, and then as, if you go to...
Who covers the loss?
That loss that you see on the end does not reflect our bank account. What that does is the simple, the profit and loss, and what it is, is that's what's happening when we come in with so many scholarship kids. We still have expenses for them.
On your explore Asia, will you be discussing the nuclear weapons in North Korea?
You know, I chose not to do Korea as a country, and I think that was very wise of me to do that. But thank you for having me. I don't know how we would have done that one. I, I guess the main thing that I'm, I'm just trying to let everybody know here, in, in here at Council, is that Boys and Girls Club needs the city's support. We need your support in a lot of ways, and you have been very supportive to us, and I would like you to continue that support. We are doing, I believe, a service for our community, our advocacy. And I think that if our program ceased, then it would be a tragic thing.
Ms. Ball, I see here that you're going to have a creating nature by watercolor at Jackson Nature Park, and it says hike, sketch, and paint. I'd like for you to get together with Ms. Turner, because we have our own idea on hike.
Okay, that is a name. The River Authority, okay, the River Authority, San Antonio River Authority, is wanting to get together with Boys and Girls Club to do a lot of events this summer. That's one of the events, they had just emailed me that they're doing. So I've sent all those flyers out to our kids. It's the first twenty that's signed up for youth. That's why I put it in there, Mayor, because I know they have grandchildren, so if you're going to get them on the floor, they're going to do it.
We're doing something with our hiking bike, Earl.
Oh, cool.
That we would love for you all to participate in.
Cool. Send me a flyer, I'll pass it out.
We're not that far, then.
Okay. And by the way, we probably, we probably run about, I'm going to say about four hundred kids to five hundred kids through our programs a year. We, we have a lot of parents, lots of kids. And the summer program, I've already got kids coming up to me, Miss D, Miss W, we're doing that summer program. So they like it, they're having fun. They're learning, but they don't know it.
Okay, so for the application?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you for the information. Did anybody have any questions?
Okay, now we're going to go on to the new business, we're going to go with three. D, which is to approve, to participate in Phelps 2014 Summer Youth Program.
I make a motion to participate in the Phelps 2014 Summer Youth Program.
Yeah, motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilman Nolique, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Okay. Now we're going to go on to three, E, consideration in action to approve a two and a half setback variance at eighteen ten Standish Street. City, it's your turn. Okay, I'm trying to make this... What you have in here in your packet there is an application for a two and a half foot variance at the address of eighteen ten Standish. The property owner is Mr. Beland, he's got an existing car for that he wants to close as, for an office building. He submitted his building application to me, and when he turned in a side pad, he saw that he's approaching two and a half feet on the, you might have a, have a, an application. He's approaching two and a half feet, if you're facing Standish, on the right-hand side.
Where's this property exactly?
It's on, actually, it's on the corner of a...
It's on, actually, it's on the corner of Eleventh and Standish. It's right past the...
Right across from Mike Davis?
Yes. And it's, currently, it's zone commercial at this point, it is. Yeah, you know where Eleventh Street, that little, one little street, they have that grayish type structure? The, it looks like a, it's a house there.
It's on the right-hand side?
Yes. Not on the Martina side, it's across the...
Yeah, correct, I, I know that, uh, east.
Yes.
I have questions. P and Z approved?
It didn't have to go through P and Z because this is a variance, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's correct. It did go through P and Z and it wasn't approved with P and Z.
And it doesn't pose any threat or, you know, any safety issues?
No, sir, it's existing, the carport, the natural structure's existing. What he's doing is he wants to enclose it, well, because he's submitting a, he's changing it, that's, that's what triggered us to be here, to P and Z and that to be all.
I think they saw, they want to approve the, the, the setback for, uh, P and Standish Street.
Do you have a motion, should I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councila Nieto, second by Councila Nolique, it's all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three zero.
Three zero.
Okay, now we have to go on to three, F, consideration in action to approve final Bella flat of ten point six two acres, S and J Orochessa, tract one thirty-seven and one, J and one thirty-seven K, Rivalton Inc., tract on Highway one eighty-one, listen.
Okay, what we have here is a submittal for the final flat that is made the Bella flat. Um, they did, we, they requested for preliminary tax submittal on October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.